The election's on Tuesday and then this coming Saturday is our town meeting.
Oh, okay.
We have still an open town meeting.
Yep.
Until I hopefully change that in the year or so.
Did you get it?
We only have like fifty people at town meeting.
Yeah.
Out of twenty-five hundred.
Saturday in June.
Yeah, it's really sad.
So, so the very lead here is that I can't be elected.
Yeah. We have it.
Congratulations.
I was also the only one running.
Come on.
I see where it goes.
It would be bad to lose against yourself.
It would be not.
So I ran out of votes and I guess eighty-two percent of the vote, which means eighteen percent would have had no one sitting around.
We need what we're getting on. Yes. Or I'll go back to you.
You can have a safety that started in a few minutes. We've got two minutes till showtime.
All right.
Okay, it's six oh one. I'm gonna open this meeting of the Voluntar Select Board for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. The first item on the agenda is the election of select board officers. Welcome Kim St. Clair over there, newest member to the board. So, the select board officers are the chair, the vice chair, and clerk. Did anyone have ideas about what?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Miles Eglon as chair.
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty.
I'll just accept it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And for vice chair, do you have a strong feeling about?
You know what, I'm good with the way I can, I'll take it if you're okay with it.
I'll take the motion. Are you taking the motion to nominate Paul Cass as vice chair?
I'll second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Am unanimous. And for clerk, I will nominate Kim St. Clair.
And I will second that.
And all in favor of Kim being the clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. The agenda has community input next, but I'm gonna make a motion to rescind our mask mandate for town hall.
Okay, I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The masks are now, I'm gonna exercise my options. Okay. Community input. Do you have anything that we wanted to bring in front of the board?
I've, I really, until I know what the board is going to discuss tonight, I'm not sure that I actually have anything.
Okay. We'll also do community input at the end. Charlie?
Charlie Dayon-Rolland-Droff, I got a quick question. It's about a year and a half ago, we bought some, a weigh station for the transfer station. Since Ed here, I was just wondering if there's any update on that.
Ed, any update on that?
We do use it, actually. We use it for weighing the, the bales of paper, uh, not bales, but the galos of paper. And the bales of cardboard that we make. So, keep track of things that way.
What about for charging?
We still need to do that. We gotta.
I know that COVID threw wrench into those.
It kinda did, yeah, but, I won't use that as an excuse, so this has been time. We do need to, to put like mattresses on it, get a weight for those, for couches and the big heavy bulky things. Just to make sure we're where we wanna be. So, I'm a little reluctant to raise the prices, but I think we're gonna have to squeak them up a little.
Understood.
Yep.
Understood. Did anyone else have anything they wanted to bring before the board?
I just noticed that the parking on, you know, from Locust, from Foundry to Prospect is not on here.
Well, it's not on here. We are still waiting to get the Highway Safety Committee to meet.
Okay.
To discuss that. We need to, I think our chairperson of that committee opted not to return. So that, that meeting needs to meet. And then report back to us. They have a number of items they need to meet on, so.
Okay, and we have no scheduled meeting dates for that?
We, we don't at this point.
Okay.
We probably could use some more volunteers for that committee, because I think it's.
It's been one more resident opening.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, sir, can you state your name?
My name is David Hill.
Okay. Just for the minute taker.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to see some movement on that. So, maybe we can press to get some sort of meeting going. I, I don't know who would hold it, because the chair is leaving.
I think we could ask the police chief in the interim to coordinate that.
We absolutely could. Okay. But yes, we, we didn't forget about it. It's, it, it was recommended to go back to committee for, for further evaluation, so. But until then, we.
Are the highway committee, uh, safety committee meetings public?
Yes. Yep, absolutely. We'll, we'll get it posted, and I'm sure I can drop you an email to let you know.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
The one thing I did bring up in the last meeting we had, the last select board meeting we had was when winter comes, and you know, maybe we hadn't thought at all about the plow situation and parking across the street and having the residents cross down the winter. So, it's something.
Yeah, nobody can park, nobody can park across the street during, during the parking bans.
Right, so it's definitely something that needs to be addressed, and I don't see it taking months, Dave.
Okay.
Can we say there was an open position on the highway committee?
There is one open residence spot. If you would take it, Mr. Hill, I can.
You'd have to recuse yourself in this matter, but.
Yes, that is the thing, because there's a conflict of interest, but you know, generally.
They don't meet very often, so.
Okay. Please consider it. I'll give it some consideration. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Always nice to have more involvement. Should've closed the door. All right, consent calendar, we have the minutes of June second. I was absent from that meeting, so I don't know how to proceed with voting to accept the mask. I read them like they were.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with them, but I'm the only person accepting it this time, so.
Right. I think by consensus, we can, we can say that those are, those are good. I don't see fire in the room. I see highway. If you gentlemen wanna, this is your, this is our guest table.
I have a P O for the articulated loader. And the reason why I'm bringing it up now is the prices have already gone up twice since we had them originally. We can still get it for forty-nine nine seventy-seven. However, we're losing the plow, which the broom could replace the plow, it's about two inches, up to two inches of snow. And we use a snow blower after that anyways, and we can probably look to put the plow on later on in our budget. We actually won't get one. It's, we're still looking at a three, four month window before we can get one, so we're still hoping to get it before winter.
Okay.
But I get a P O for four thousand, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars to book at Cape Town, Hampshire.
Okay, why don't we get the P O moved, and then we can open it up for discussion?
What's the P O number? Thank you. I'll move forward, P O number one nine eight three for the amount of four, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars for.
The articulated.
The articulated loader, warrant, uh, article. Does her name, who are you buying it from? Chichester? She bought it from Chichester, okay.
Do you wanna second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there a discussion the board would like to have about the articulating loader?
Since it went through the law, I don't have no problem. And George is saying that movement on a little get it, probably by winter, I'm okay with that, so.
Just to bring, follow up with that. There now, now a surcharge for steel on there that we didn't have originally. The municipal discounts have gone down. They still have municipal discount, but not as good as they used to be. That's what the price increase was on that. And he says.
What was the price before?
It was forty-nine thousand.
So it hasn't gone up?
One hundred and four.
Which is.
But that included the snow blade, which we're, we're not gonna have.
Which is, which is worth how much money?
He said twenty. Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Does this piece of equipment do what you needed? I mean, you said that you can do all the brush, what would be the footers?
The snow blower, you use anything over two or three inches of snow anyway. And he said you can sweep, you can actually sweep, when there's a light snow, you can sweep off the sidewalks, and then actually be cleaning sidewalks at the same time. The sweeper's also be used in the summertime for sweeping and helping us sweep downtown, you know, things. Whenever we have, you know, an area where there's only snow, dirt, or anything like that, we go and clean that stuff up.
Could you use this to, for street sweeping?
You can use it. That's another thing we can.
Thirty-six dollars a year?
I don't, we didn't pay, we didn't pay a thousand.
That's, that's the budget line, but that's not what we lose that.
You know, the street sweeper that comes around uses, they, they can carry it. This would have to be swept, you know, bucket and, and a lot more, a little bit more work. And I mean, in an emergency, you can clean up the streets.
What is the snow blower on? What, what is the snow blower on?
The snow blower, the one we have now is on our board cat.
Okay.
But it's too wide for most of our sidewalks. It's over sixty inches wide. Sidewalks are four, four feet is the, with sidewalk plow, we can't fit on most of our sidewalks with it, actually. That's why we wanted to go with this. We cannot treat our sidewalks with the original skid steer. This one has a sander and everything on it, so we'll be able to treat the sidewalks also for icing and anything else. So, yeah, this, and this can be used again for, not just sidewalks, it can be used for anything. We want to use it for like, you know, instead of running around with the skid steer. You're not dragging the tires, wearing tires, or this, this curves.
So, so would the, the goal be to try to just keep up with the snow in order to use that piece of equipment? Instead of having to use the snow blower?
Oh, no, the snow blower on here. The new one? Yes.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it's got a four-foot snow blower, so it'll fit on all our sidewalks.
Okay.
So it's just the plow blade?
The plow blade itself is the only thing that's. And that's something I probably can put into the, my, my budget for next year.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor of, I don't have the P O number.
So I'll take P O one ninety-three.
Okay. Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, or none? You pass it my way, Paul, or you sign it?
Absolutely.
I know this is new, we don't, we've never, we've never met in person before.
No, and I think I'm still, can't sign, right?
You can sign purchase orders, just not checks yet.
Okay, got it.
Yep, and I'll pass this around so that everyone can, can sign. Okay, that is approved. Just any of those lines up bottom. Anything else, George?
I would, it's gonna require one, non-public.
Yo, okay. Are you ready for that?
It's up to you, people.
Okay. I don't wanna have, have you hang out all night, so there isn't. But if you're ready, if someone could make a motion to go into non-public session.
I'll make a motion going, non-public, nine one eight three, personal.
Thank you. And by roll call vote, Paul?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Miles as a guest, going into non-public.
You're older, I think? Yeah, so yeah. Yeah, New Hampshire's beautiful, it's pretty much managed by N R R A that we use for our recycling and that sort of thing with that little transfer station. As a program, we can get the blue plastic bags for roadside cleanup. We can have a roadside cleanup day, and they don't cost anything. All it takes is a signature. Like you get a couple of cases of them to have on hand, and.
So you put two, we can get a maximum of ten?
Yep. There's a hundred and fifty in a, in a case, so there's plenty. Yeah, three hundred bags is.
By consensus, are we okay with me signing free trash bags, okay?
They typically want to have a particular day and time and group that goes out and does this, but I kind of like to have them available if someone wants to come in and say, I wanna clean, you know, I wanna do, I'll pick on Turgeon Lane, for instance. You know, I wanna do Turgeon Lane, that's great. Have a bag, bring the bag back to me. Yep, that's all.
And you can keep, keep track of it, so. Excellent.
Yep, yep. The only other thing I got is a couple of weeks ago, which I forgot to report to you guys. We sent a load of cardboard out for recycling, and good news on things, the price of cardboard is up, we got almost twenty-five hundred dollars.
Whoa.
For a trail load of cardboard.
Awesome.
That was good.
There's your, there's your plow.
There you go.
It won't work that well.
Get it, I have.
No, no, he doesn't.
That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you, Dave.
Great, thanks.
Hold on, so there is something on the minutes about Locust Street sidewalk?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Paul, for keeping me honest there. Locust Street sidewalk, a couple of meetings ago, we had a gentleman that has a complaint observation. I drove by myself, I see what he's talking about, that it just looks like it's part of the road, so I don't know how he would fix it.
Well, I drove by, Joe, I know what he's talking about. It's, it's kind of, it's like right next to the school, so you gotta have people parking there, I understand that, and I can see his.
We have a couple of options. I talked to a paving company the other days. Same thing I thought, paint a line, but I think we paint a line, put a cross mark, a crosswalk in front of the stove, that'll keep them off the sidewalk.
Do?
We could paint it like a crosswalk in front of the stove, on the sidewalk. They pipe on that, and I mean, I don't know what more you could do.
Well, I've already taken a couple of people for parking there, and they've actually paid the tickets. I mean, I can't.
Well, I think we could start there. I mean, we, we have a painting machine up here.
Correct, we have the machine, it does courses that means.
Yep, I would do with that, because.
Because I also check on curb and then.
Super.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I, I think if we're in agreement, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to paint lines, a line and then diagonal.
Make it like a crosswalk.
Yeah, in that, in that area.
It's, it's plan one, and that works, we won't have to go further. Then plan B might be to actually put.
Also schools go for the summer, so that should reduce the parking now.
Is that reinforced?
He was okay with this last year.
It is, Joe said that he's.
I, I've already actually, it, it's technically a sidewalk, so I've already put a couple of parking tickets on cars out there, and we've received calls.
Okay.
And mostly, if they're in school hours, it's an issue.
Didn't have until he said.
After school, everyone has his ears.
Gotcha. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
So, we'll start with some paint, see if that does the.
I'm fine with anything you wanna do, it's like, you know, it's.
What, what do you mean cost per building?
He says, there's so much effort to put, you know, curbing in it. That would have to be rebuild the sidewalk, because you put curbing in, you're gonna have to rebuild the sidewalk. We did build the sidewalks.
Yeah.
So, you know, he didn't give me an exact ballpark, but he says, you know, the car must sign over basically.
Is there no parking sign there now?
There are no no parking signs there, because it's actually, there isn't a parking lot along Locust Street. There's no.
Yeah, it's just that they go so far over.
Well, what we did, Nick, and the sidewalk used to go behind two big maple trees, so the sidewalk was behind trees. He still had people parking, blocking his driveway when schools opened. And he complained about that. He said, what's gonna happen now with the sidewalk here? So we raised the sidewalk a little bit, so control the water view down it, but apparently, the little bump on it wasn't enough to keep the cars from utilizing it as a parking lot. And they actually parked it against the lawn a few times, I guess. So, you know, we went, we did the most inexpensive route, not putting curbing in and stuff, because, you know, costs more than anything.
Okay. So we've got a quick.
Originally, it was okay, so.
Clear.
Of course, no school for a year.
Action to, to try to solve this problem.
And I know Denise has been up, right after the meeting we had that night, and talked to him too, so he's got attention, so it's good.
Nope.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else?
You want me?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys.
I am gonna take the place next, uh, the patient due waiting.
All right.
Oh.
So, first meeting back, I've got my office here, so all my purchase orders are locked in my office. I can discuss them, I know what they all were. You haven't announced them, have you? I don't have them, unfortunately. But we'll start with the new hire, Mr. Bryson Hill. I'd like, Kim, you didn't get a chance to meet him, unfortunately, because, but the board interviewed him last week. And the consensus after was to make a motion tonight to hire Mr. Bryson Hill, or give him a conditional offer as a hire to meet. Yep, I, I'm okay moving forward with that.
Okay, so we got a motion to extend the conditional offer to Bryson Hill for patrolman position?
Second.
I know you didn't get a chance to meet him, and maybe this can be one of the conditions that, I don't know if you're interested in, in meeting him.
Sure.
He was, he was still delightful. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. You got the green light there.
So the next thing I wanted to do was talk about what we offer him for a starting salary. We're six months basically into the budget at this point, with two open slots for the last six months.
If you're gonna go into details, we should go into non-public.
Yeah. So, why don't we, why don't we make a, sorry, I didn't realize that this would come up, I probably should have. If we can have another motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion going non-public for RSA ninety-one dash eight three.
Second.
Okay, and we'll call the, Paul?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Miles as a guest. One more time, we'll start back in.
Toughly.
Huh? Okay, we're back in public session, and. Let's make it centered with your camera. I'm quick, good?
We're good.
Okay. So, if I could, I would entertain a motion for several pay adjustments.
I'd like to make a motion to increase three officers, well, actually, hire one officer. Officer Hill, starting at twenty-two dollars per hour.
Why don't we do that as a, as a own motion, since we're like extending an offer?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of extending an offer to Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay.
And I would like to make a motion to increase the hourly rate for Officer Brooks to twenty-four dollars per hour.
You know, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to make a motion to increase Officer Philbrook's rate to twenty-two dollars per hour.
And I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good there. Anything else for us? I know you have some P Os.
Yes.
We can approve them and, and sign them.
I, I want to talk about vacation time. I have two officers that are full-time that are about to lose a lot of hours of vacation. They've been very dedicated to the town during this, and especially being down those two full-time slots, and that's why they have chosen not to take their vacations. So I've asked the board to entertain either maybe a buyout of those hours that could be absorbed in my current budget, or extending the limit where the hours won't expire at the end of June. So, this is, this is my personal opinion, I've talked with the board. My personal opinion, I think we aired it and doing it, I'm not sure why. And I think our employees should be able to carry over at least a week, but I'm thinking two weeks, you know, up to two weeks carryover, because it's, it's not that they're not taking vacation, it's taking vacation when they want to.
Yeah, I, I agree that, so, back in the fall, we changed the personnel policy to have vacation time expire at the end of June. Which in retrospect, I don't know why we picked that date, but I.
I don't know either.
I, I think we should move it to the end of the year.
So, full-time people are allowed to carry over up to eighty hours, and part-time people up to sixty hours, those who earn appropriated time at the end of the year, and then it has always expired at the end of June without anything in the policy, but that was the auditor's understanding. So the action of the board in September was to codify that in the policy, what the auditor's understanding was. But that, you'll see in the agenda, the tax collector's policy suggestion further in the agenda relates back to this too. That was her request to that instead of expiring in June, the following year, time to carry forward until the end of the following year.
So I'll, I mean, I'll make a motion to go back, have that.
Okay, laser. So a motion to extend expiring of vacation days to the, let's say, December thirty-first?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that change?
Aye.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, sure.
So are there any financial implications to changing this? Like in terms of budgeting?
Not in terms of budgeting. It's only liability, like an accounting liability on the books for how much you might pay somebody out when they leave. You pay them out on their accrued vacation, so if they have more time on the books, because it's been on the books longer, that, that would be the only.
But it's all the same budget.
I am the only one left, I believe, as an account employee who is.
There are two others.
All right, okay. In the police department, I'm the only one left that is allowed, and it's only ten days, it's not. Well, vacation, sick time, I would be bought out at ten days. And I believe I'm the only one that would still be eligible for that.
Right, but that's separate from our vacation time.
So, so this motion is to extend the, the time that they can use it to the end of the year?
Correct.
And what about, so the carryover is, is not changing, that's the same.
Okay. Yeah, and just say officers on board up to the end of the year. Right, so they can carry eighty hours from last year to twelve thirty-one this year.
So, so we've been approached at, at least two, two times to move this deadline, but I, I just think, like, if we make this change, there are no more exceptions. They've gotta use their time.
Right.
Or.
You know, I'm, I'm desperately trying to get this staff.
I know.
COVID was the other thing, you couldn't leave the New England states per the town policy, so that kind of restricted where any of us could go.
Okay, everyone?
I appreciate it.
Uh, okay to vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, so we cut two of those, really.
Yep, we did.
So earlier today, I emailed the board with a request from Fishing Game to put pheasants out in scalping. Our last agreement with them expired the thirty-first of last year. It's been something they've been doing for years that attracts a lot of people. They just want permission to do it, and it would go until two thousand twenty-three. Yep, I'm okay with that.
All right, is there discussion? I, I think by consensus, we can agree with, we can have some pheasants.
And that was something I was gonna ask you to sign, but if you, it's in my.
Locked in your house.
If you want it with permission, I can sign it as well. She doesn't, the woman Karen who runs the program, is not.
Yeah, I don't.
She's not worried if I sign it, or if you sign it.
I, I think you, you should be authorized as the police chief to.
Okay, you'll send that, send that back over tomorrow.
Can I just like, one more thing, that we perhaps send an email out on the town website when that season is in play? Only because I've been there when they were hunting, and I didn't know at the time. But the hunter said, you should really be wearing orange, so it might be good.
Well, you're ready if you want.
I know.
You know what, though, it's, I don't know when the season is, but it does seem to be an off-season for regular hunting, so it's a really good point. We can contact Fishing Game, I'll get the info, and then we'll put it right on our Facebook page, and we'll pass it on to T as well.
Perfect.
And ask her to put on the town one.
Great suggestion.
Perfect. Then the three that I had that were purchase orders was, the first was article number nine, which is the warrant article for the cameras and phone systems for town hall and the police department. So I was looking for sixty thousand, which was the warrant article, to go to Accutel to start that. I'm not sure about, sure how to put forward that. Do you remember the article? The warrant article that was?
No, you said nine?
Yes. That's a good one. I'll, I'll move forward, article number nine for the phone and, the phone upgrade system?
Phone and cameras.
Phone and cameras, scary upgrade system. Okay, that's for upstairs and downstairs, the whole thing.
Why don't we, if you can, second that?
Uh, second?
Okay.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question, Joe. How many companies are you talking to for the system?
This was something that was done before I took over, so she, I'm not sure how many Chief Ducharme went to, but it was, Accutel was giving us a discount to do both at the same time. And that's how it ended up in the C I P that way, and that's how it was presented to the budget committee and the board at the time, and that's how the warrant article came up that way, correct?
Yes, though you're not bound to that vendor, so if you wanted to make another close, that. Yes, though you're not bound to that vendor, so if you wanted to make another close, that could still happen.
So this vendor, Accutel, actually was nice enough, um, to keep it for another six months, cause his actual proposal had already expired, but he said he was still honored.
Okay, um, is it possible that you could kind of look back at Chief Ducharme's list of vendors and see who he contacted and?
Absolutely.
Maybe provide us some information with that?
Yes.
Um, and then, I mean, if we've talked to a couple of companies and we, and this was the best, um, um, package, then I don't have any issue. Just wondering if we only talked to one company or not?
Yeah, I'll get you the answer, I just don't have it tonight.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
Okay, so it sounds like, um, we're not ready to vote on this motion? Um, I, I mean, cause if we vote, we're approving.
Right.
We can put off two weeks, that's fine.
Okay.
Alright, that's a big number.
Yep, um, I think we should, we should table that one.
Cause I'd like to see it, eh? They're big enough that I just like.
Yeah, no, no.
P O one-eight-six-four.
Uh, the next one was for six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and that was for a town prosecutor to take over police prosecution. Caroline and I met with a attorney. She goes, oops, do we have the resume right here?
Could you?
I read the email.
It's, yes, it is her, here goes the man.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And I believe I sent you her contract as well.
Which is not in the paper.
Okay, I sent that by email.
Okay.
What's the length, was the length of this?
Six months, it'll cover July to December thirty-first, but then we'd have to speak with her and sit down, see how things are going. And would we want her to continue next year? Which would be for a full year, so you'd probably be looking at twelve, thirteen.
So the only thing I don't know about this is, and obviously you do, is that's like the standard, basically, you know, six thousand two hundred dollars is the standard for six months?
Right, so I reached out to Barrington and Summersworth, who, I'm sorry, Summersworth, Stratford. And she is doing a town-by-town basis, Barrington's actually more expensive because they're busier. We're more umpire with, uh, Stratford with our caseload.
Okay.
So she had me pull all of our numbers from the last three years, I provided her with all those. And she comes highly, highly recommended by both of those police chiefs, and I know her personally when she was the prosecutor for state police.
What does she consider? Is it hourly?
Flat rate.
Flat rate. Okay.
It's a thousand forty-one per month.
So part of the problem is that with, um, the chief's promotion into that role, he was previously, um, the prosecutor and he was the only one trained in that capacity.
Okay.
But you shouldn't be having your chief be the prosecutor because they should always be separate and able to, um, you know, adjudicate a grievance and, and, you know, stand above whatever the processes are going on within the department as a step of last resort, so to speak. So, um, there's not currently an opportunity for anybody else to get trained for prosecution. So there's a double benefit of, um, separating those duties as appropriate, but then also it frees up time for him, for our staff or our short staff to be doing other things.
And part of what you'd be doing is, uh, for example, takes up a lot of my time, is if the defense attorney sends me a six-page motion and names all these case laws, I'm not a certified attorney with a, on the bar. You know, for me to sit there and look up case law after case law after case law, takes what he had a law clerk doing, half hour, cut and paste, takes me three hours to try and respond to. This is something she will do, she knows all these and such.
So this engagement is until the end of the year and then we renew the wait at that point?
Correct.
Though, um, we'll be getting figures from her, she knows that we will be starting a budget process in August or September. So she's going to be budgeting, she's going to be presenting a proposal for a contract for next year for a full year. So you can certainly choose not to do that, but, you know, there is an ongoing expectation and yes, you can choose to not renew.
Okay.
Um, where in your budget would you?
I would take it out of that full-time line.
Okay. Okay. Um, any more discussion on the prosecutor?
No.
Okay. I don't think we've actually had a motion to.
How, no, I'm gonna get, I'll move forward with, um, P O such and such for six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for prosecutor, prosecutor fees for six months, is that?
Yes.
Say that pretty good, okay.
Okay. Um, if we can have a second?
Second.
All right, no worries, no worries, that's your first meeting, um, any more discussion on this?
Not for me.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right, prosecutor is approved, is, is there something for me to sign here?
No, there's no contract there, so we can print that out via, from me, no.
Okay.
Or he'll bring it up.
And last thing I have, the board actually already approved, and now I just finally got the invoice from the city of Dover, and I believe it was for about twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars, and that was for my take-home car, we need the brakes, the rotors, the tires and inspection and a tire rod. So that's what covered all of it.
Yep, and we already approved everything, but I'll move forward for the P O number such and such with twelve.
I don't, I don't think we need to, right? We.
Do we already?
I don't think you need to because you approved the idea of it and the vote of it, so when it gets to be a bill, then whatever you decide.
Do we, do we, don't go, we get approved a dollar one?
No, I don't think you approve a dollar amount, I mean, you could certainly approve a dollar amount as well.
Just to cover our bases, I'm sorry.
Alright, no, it's okay, I just, uh, move forward with, for cruiser repairs, John's Cruiser Repair for twelve, one hun- one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Who was it?
Just.
City of Dover.
City of Dover, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, and I know we already went through this one, so.
But yeah, we have a, a motion.
Second.
And a second, um, discussion?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it for me unless you have something.
Um, the only thing I have for you, and I know we discussed in the last meeting, and it is an interesting concept that the resident brought up to me about, he wasn't complaining, but it, it made me think that every time I get down to Main Street, Front Street, it's all posted to our pocket, but no one deserves it to our pocket.
So what happens is the people who live in those, I guess, condos or apartments, the front street apartments, it's not Carol Nick, it's not the right side road. She has the parking in that lot and all the way around the backside of her building. The problem is on the left side, they are assigned one parking spot per condo or apartment. And most people that live in there have at least two.
Right.
So this has been an ongoing issue for years, the battle.
Right.
Um, with Black Bean was supposed to reopen, we spoke with Carol, we put flyers, I've gone to the company and said, we're gonna start enforcing that, and then Black Bean did reopen, so we kind of left it alone. So.
So right now, it's just not enforced, it's.
Right, because the biggest issue was when Black Bean went open.
Yeah.
He would, he would open early in the morning, these people wouldn't move their cars until noon time, one, two, taking up all those spots in front of his business.
Right, I'm not saying it's particularly an issue down there because of the businesses.
Right. But if they're.
If we started businesses, obviously it's a change. But what the resident's saying, and I have to agree with him, what particularly bothers him is either they have a two-hour.
Yes.
Two-hour parking and enforce it, or basically remove the signs, is what he's telling me.
And if we remove the signs, once all those buildings are full again, it's gonna have to go through the whole process to get them back.
So, uh, it's just something I want to keep on the radar.
Yeah. We've been just trying to play nice.
Is it possible that we could enforce like certain hours that are restricted, so maybe like during the day hours, business hours?
I would say why not, but.
Yeah.
The, the issue with that would be we would just have to change the ordinance, so it would have to go through highway safety to change the ordinance. So right now.
Dave Hill joins that community, we'll go with that. Sorry, I just.
So there is a possibility to that, we'll just have to go through highway safety and then through the board and the process of changing what the ordinance currently says.
Because I think the, the concern is like, if we have businesses there, then it's gonna restrict parking.
And, and that's, that's what the problem is, is these people park there and then they, you know, whether they're working nights or third shift, I don't know. But they're, they're the same people who park there during snowstorms and cause us issues, and since we put them with a parking van, they still are there. A lot of them have main plates, they don't change their addresses, and we have no way to find them.
So it shouldn't spread rumors in the board, but, uh, some of the information I heard is the possibility of some shop going in there?
Oh, I haven't heard any of this.
So. We'll see, but if there's rumors of it.
We have the, uh, village laundromat that is there.
Phil's old, the old restaurant that was Phil's is just rumor.
Yeah. So.
So.
Business is good though, so if you've got business down there.
Yeah, it would be nice to, something downtown.
Okay, that's it, all I got for that.
Okay, so, I think we can sort of keep an eye on that and address it as it, as it comes up.
We've just been trying to be nice to people.
Yeah.
I know, I know. Lack of party, so with no business there.
Yep.
It's tough to enforce.
Oh, I agree.
So, cause really, other than the businesses, there's no other reason for them to auto-part.
Agreed.
Real.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Great.
You too.
Two. Fire. I think the. Here's the.
Oh, well, I'm.
Here is a, is a person's interest.
Sean, why are you? I thought.
Think we could lean into the other.
Use that.
Yeah, I go, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
No?
Can't have one.
That's right. And congratulations.
Thank you.
You know Sean?
I don't.
This is the Assistant Chief Fire Department, Sean Gliddon. Wanted to bring you in so you would meet him.
Okay.
Cause between him and I, Danny Toaster, Debbie, he's out doing some training, like, we would be the ones that you, if I'm not here, you'd be dealing with Sean when it comes to fire department issues.
Okay.
Probably get you up to speed on that one.
Thank you.
Yeah? He's also been very helpful with, um, doing some research, research for the boiler downstairs and.
Too lovely.
He's all over. Much appreciated, good buddy.
Yeah, it's just not fair stuff, he does everything.
Mm-hmm.
So glad to do it. Okay, I got a few, uh, a few POs here that I wanna, um, run by, and then I think some of us should generate some discussion. I just wanna make sure I get, that you guys are all up to speed on some of the questions and some of the issues that we're facing. And it relates directly to some of the, uh, POs here that we're gonna bring up. The first one I have is, uh, number nineteen sixty-two, and it's gonna be to Justin Ripley, and it's for three of our firefighters. One being the Assistant Chief that have gone to class to become certified firefighter level two. Um, they're write down, you got everything down except for your final written exam, correct? So it's gonna be him, it's gonna be for Captain Knowles, one of our in-town guys, uh, Jason Roy. So that's huge for us, cause now we have three guys that are in town, since we only have five. That'll help us getting guys here quicker, they're a lot more qualified, so. Again, Justin Ripley, it's for their class, it's for, uh, one thousand and fifty dollars.
Total or each?
Total.
Total. Um, I'll move forward with P O nineteen sixty-two for one thousand and fifty dollars for level two certification.
Okay.
Second.
Should I put anything besides level two, is there a specific name for four level two?
Level two fire, fire certification.
So we have a motion and a second, um, is there any discussion?
Not for me, it sounds like it's just, you get three guys up to.
The next level.
Next level.
The next level of expertise.
I mean, I don't think you wanna know what that is, it, me.
As, as it just got passed, the kid, you asked what cost, it's three fifty per head, but what level two does, it takes you away from that basic level and it gets you up into classes like they took auto extrication classes, they took advanced pump classes, they've taken propane fire suppression classes. All these are the next level up. Cause I know there's more than that that you guys.
I have.
The only thing is they paid three fifty for that, between the three guys, they probably put in three hundred hours of their own time, at zero compensation.
No concerns with that myself.
So you don't have five at level two, you know?
More, more than that.
Okay.
In-town, people that actually live in town.
Actually in-town, you realize there's only five people in this town that work on the fire department. The other twenty-four come from other communities to protect our needs.
Okay.
So, and, and with that being said, that's the cost to them for the tuition, but they all put in well over hundred hours a piece to complete the class, all on their own time. Cause they totally debt the community, they don't know what they do.
How many, how many other, um, levels two's are, um, like?
One, two, three.
Besides the five and ten?
Yeah.
So we have four that are not. So this sort of, so I originally took mine in name, which is, New Hampshire doesn't recognize, cause it's not for board. So I went back and did it again just to have the official cert. Um, we also, all of the members in the class plus two additional members who are allowed to do the emergency vehicle operation, um, training. So how to drive a fire truck, which is better for out of insurance, all of those. Um, there also is a pump class that everybody has to go through. So there's a number of classes that are all moved into this.
Okay.
And we actually donate some of our equipment, trying to get one of our engines up there to be used for that reason. And when we donate some of our stuff, it helps the overall picture of, uh, success for helping each other out, but allows us, we'll let you use the engine and go slide on the slotting for us, the barbering on, trying to get more people in these classes, right? Maybe a fire engine, I will send one other time, you can use your class, but I want another spot, but I want this, so. And we're good with that, I mean, it happens on a regular basis, and we're able to swap those things.
Great, all right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Classes. What else you got?
But to kind of go back to your question too about how many level twos we actually have. Everybody in the fire department has to be level one, we have two new guys in the department now, which will go to school in the fall. They need to be at least a level one, so to utilize their skills inside a firm building, you might have to be level two, we only have a handful of other guys that are level two. They've all got the one and two, so I, probably five or six more, I don't know what's really coming for. We're getting there, so then, yes, we get all these people hired, we get them trained, and you know what happens to them?
Really?
Yeah, they go work for a whole night fire department, so, that's what happens.
But I was just like.
That's the game.
Yep.
Just the way you guys are well aware of that. The next one that I have. Is to, uh, it's number nineteen sixty-three, and it's gonna be a fire technician safety, and it's for the warrant article number ten, which was for, um, the, uh, air filter station. We researched through a couple, three different vendors, fire technician safety, we've used them on some other things, they feel are the best price. I pass this around, you can look at it, there is one change, and it's on the statement that they gave us, it was like fifteen hundred dollars for remote, remote fill regulator, which we don't need. So that's gonna come off, so this is the original one that you've given me, so basically, we're gonna end up at, uh, fifty-five D six two eight five is the cost for the fuel station.
All right, what other companies, I asked John the same day while securing, um, what other companies have we talked to?
I had one out of Massachusetts, which was called Air Supply, was one that I talked to, and actually, there's only like four of these in the whole group area that can supply this kind of equipment. So we contacted three of them, and we dealt with supplement, who is the, uh, the sales revenue, they seem to be making it for the best part, so.
Do you have, um, written estimates from the other companies?
Uh, I have one other one. It's a time, it was a timing thing on a lot of it, but, uh, the other ones were well above what we ended up paying here. This is down, you got a little bit of a home time discount on board, because you didn't deal with them a lot, so we was able to take a few things off to help us out and try to get this through. So we kind of went back with them.
Were they comparable, um, systems?
Price-wise or systems as far as operational wise, of, price-wise, this was by far the best price. Operational-wise, these guys had, it's called Bauer, it's a name in fact for this type of equipment. And not all the other companies we talked to had Bauer, which would have met our needs, it would have, it was something else, which was more expensive. But the one, they cared exactly what we need, but that's one other reason why we focused on those guys is we had to provide.
Um, do you, do you have that note off the top of your head how much more, um, the other system was?
Yeah, close to ten, ten billion dollars.
And I'm sure there was something that happened, that other one?
It's gonna go to five, the other one was Air Supply.
Air Supply, okay.
We're all understand why this has come to where it is, I have, uh, the Air Man that we've always talked about, that was leaving, that's fine, that, that is gone.
I've heard about the air fueling station for many years.
The year, huh?
I've heard about it for many years.
Well, the Air Man, which we use as our primary thing, that is now gone. Summersworth has passed it on, it's not with the party.
Can you make a motion for the P O? And then I can.
Um, make a motion to approve, um, uh, to bring forward P O one nine six three for fifty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh. Uh, what was the, what was the amount for the warrant article?
Fifty-five.
Oh, okay, so we're, we're very close. Um, and the rest, I'm sure you can make up.
Oh, yeah. I got a, I got a spot for that, even if it was more than that, I had it already where it was gonna be taken care of, so. So, we're fine on that, you know, it's over.
Other, other discussions on our air station?
And so, Mark, Mark, looking at this, um, so it looks like some of these are admission costs and not necessarily annual costs, is that correct?
Right, you can see there's some on the annual cost there.
Right.
There's one cost on there for quarterly air testing, because the air has to be a certain standard, but it'd be a lot for us to do. And there's also a cost on there for annual maintenance of the entire building.
So, the installation cost, um, that's twenty-six hundred dollars?
Yeah, it's included in that.
So, that would be, uh, so that'd be a cost, a one-point cost?
Yep.
And it, it has to be vented through the back of the fire station.
Okay.
And we already did the pre-work, the electrical?
We are in, still in the process of that, we've started that.
Through that, right?
Yes, yes. We've started that upgrade, and again, because I have Sean here with me, he's got a, uh, an individual that we're probably gonna contract with to, uh, to the electrical wiring for that, and some of the other needed upgrades that we had talked about. Between C-mob needing the station and, uh, the other individual we're gonna work with, um, there's some other issues which tie into what we were dealing with before. That we're gonna be upgraded, uh, to make sure that the system is one percent ready.
So, the, um, additional cost for electrical and building modifications, um, where is that coming from?
It's gonna come out of the building maintenance line.
Okay. And do you have a, a, an estimated cost for that? Is?
As of right now, it's about twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, all right, so that's electrical and building modification.
Yeah, that's where we are now, but there's also gonna be some piggybacking on that, because we have issues with, uh, some of our, uh, what's the word, one?
So, if you remember last year, we replaced one of the circuit breaker panels, but, but the main panel is thirty years old as well. They did a testing of some of the circuit breakers, and it knocked out, but it's supposed to trip. So, that if somebody overloads that circuit, it's supposed to trip all that money amps.
Yeah.
It was going to twenty-five, thirty, it knocked out.
But is it not our fault?
It, it's thirty years old, so it's hard to follow.
Yes, of course, it existed.
So, you know, part of his recognition, not related to this project, but related to building maintenance is, you should swap over the circuit breakers.
Just the break.
Just the breakers.
So, we're looking at that as, we'll be rolled into that twelve fifty to, to get this thing up and running, so we're gonna replace some of those. Well, no, it happens, all those things overheat, nobody's there, what's gonna happen? So, that's the other reason, the other warrant article, we would be on it, so. Again, we're playing catch-up with some of these things, so that's why.
Um, so, with the cost for the electrical and the building modifications in the building, um, line for this year? In the budget?
We have a bill, and we got it slide out.
Yeah, yep, it's already in there.
Okay, great, so it's all planned?
It's all in here, yeah, it is. We, we look forward to this when we built the budget last year.
Okay.
If this was coming down the road, it could all get approved, and that money would sit in there ready to go once we. This isn't gonna come off the shelf, this may be six, ten weeks out before we even get to the unit. You know, everything is nowadays, nothing that you just get right away, he's still trying to get me a date, and he's trying to fast-track it for us as much as he can. But everything is in place, there's no other additional cost, we're gonna find it all in the budget, so we got that one.
Okay, that's great, so the, the electrical circuit, um, changes, that is in this twelve hundred dollars as well?
So, the new circuit breakers are not, because like I said, that was outside of, that was when he came and looked at, he gave us the twelve fifty, well, he looked at it and said, hey, just not, these are really old, have you tested them recently, and I said, no, he's like, well, I mean, when you test them, they're going for you, and. They, they should trip, what mission of, so.
Did he give you an estimate for that, Sean?
He did not, uh, he did say that unfortunately, circuit breakers are one of the things that are in that list of material shortage right now. Um, so, it could be two to six weeks just to order the breakers.
Okay.
So, I can get you on the list of all the breakers, we can either, I think we got, he does it.
And, um, and are you funded in that line for that, I expect the cost is.
We'll, we'll see what we're building, we haven't, we spent very little out of that line. Nine is seventy-five hundred, we probably just spent five hundred dollars. I mean, I have a tendency, my public knows this, I don't spend a lot upfront money having a fire department budget, I'm kind of a weak, same kind of guy as I mean to. And this was one of those things, again, that we had planned ahead for, not doing the circuit breaker, I don't know what the circuit breaker costs, I'm not an electrician, you know?
Thirty, forty dollars, yeah, thirty to fifty.
Thirty to fifty, and we probably got a dozen in there that we need to replace. Cheaper than a little panel.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, are we gonna have to replace the whole panel?
Hopefully not, uh.
Hopefully, if they can find one.
We need to look at it, so it's a standard panel, it's not, the other panel was a knockoff panel that actually had a recall, the next part was, we had to replace the whole panel last year. The whole sub-panel is what I should call it, um, this is the main panel that power comes in, so it's, it's a more standard, um, circuit breakers readily available, breakers. On the block, it's a town building, so it has to be a licensed electrician, changes all of those things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with you also.
I know that question.
All. Is that already to vote on?
By you. You don't have nineteen sixty-three?
I, I, no, I didn't. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Also, no. What else you got?
I don't think. I got one more, nineteen sixty-four, and this is gonna be a fire safety USA, and it's for hose and floating strainers and some equipment we need to take water from an outside source and draw it into the engine, drafting, based on what this is for. With our new engine, we got two lengths of hard suction line, a ten-foot. Basically, what happens when we have to draft, if we're down to the boat ramp, you have to put a truck up on the road, you gotta run a line down into the water and draw it back in. Well, twenty feet sometimes doesn't quite give us what we need, so. So, this PO is to get one more length of that ten-foot hose, get a floating strainer so it floats on top, so we're not taking anything off the bottom. And then another siphon, so if we need to run from one tank to another, that comes from a couple of fire incidents, we've been on, we went to the annual fire, the Arc Indoor Dumpster Fire that we went to. So, we needed some equipment to make that, uh, be a more efficient operation. So, for the pieces of equipment that we need there, this will come out of the equipment line, which is at Ponte, Ponte Neste, it's for one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
One thousand two hundred and sixty-five?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll move forward, PO number nineteen sixty-four, a fire safety USA, um, four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, good motion.
Second?
Okay, discussion.
Discussion. Here none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It sounds like a necessary piece of equipment.
Well, the thing is, this kind of leads to another little discussion, because everybody here is, is aware, uh, of the water supply in our community, right?
Yes.
Because this is one of the reasons why, um, we need to get this, uh, this equipment, because if we have, all right now, they can't keep the tank full to where it should be. I don't care where that, we tried to keep it at eighty percent, we're hovering between fifty and sixty percent. For fire suppression reasons. And some of the last few incidents that we've been on, we've been in North Florida a little while, but we went to Elliot, we were flowing close to fifteen hundred gallons a minute on these fires right now. So, if there's fifty thousand gallons in the tank at fifteen hundred gallons a minute, how long can I flow water? About forty minutes, and the tank is empty, and then I have no more hydric, I got no water. So, we wanna get this additional equipment, so basically, we work on a plan within the fire station there, if we have any large incident downtown, where we have these large buildings. If it's not a piece of our equipment, it's gonna be a piece of mutually, we go in the boat ramp, or they're gonna go to the upper end, somebody has to start drawing water, so we can have a dedicated water supply, that won't run out. So, this also leads back to some of the discussion on the hazard mitigation things that we were talking about, and we brought this up before, about putting in dry hydrants at those two locations. And I think that's something that us as a fire department, as a community, as a forward, really need to look at that.
It talks about this years ago.
We have, um, we've had it, but with the recent issues between the drought.
Yeah.
And not being able to keep the tank in a supply within the community where it should be, and then it's marginal. Eighty thousand gallons at the mill's part, it isn't gonna be, uh, it isn't gonna be too.
If a dry hydrant, I'm gonna, I'm making assumption here, whether it's something that's by the river, that's a hydrant that goes into the water, you just suck the water out?
You're correct. And, and what that is, Paul, it's beneficial in a lot of ways, because in the wintertime, of course, everything's frozen, heat is gonna be down under there. Basically, a truck's gonna come up, it's gonna be a post with a bale on it, sitting right there, and they're gonna commit the hook directly to that. It wouldn't need to do a lot of this other prep work, put three hoses together, put a floating siphon out there, and do all this stuff, you can save yourself from ten or fifteen minutes.
These guys have always been talking with spheres, that's, first of all, I come up.
Yes.
But Mike, Mike, Mike. My thought process is just briefly, this. I don't know how much I would do.
Yeah, we were talking with George on that, too, and he was gonna do some work and try to find that.
I can't imagine it's that expensive, I could be wrong, but. I mean, I, I would say, I mean, I guess I should even guess, but I can't imagine something, something three, five thousand.
I wouldn't expect it to be any more than.
Not more than. You would expect it to be more than.
Cause you're.
Cause you were going to. So, you're.
Turbines and stuff.
Yeah, forgot about that, yeah. Yeah, it might change a little bit, yeah, yeah, that's.
So, that's the only reason I, so, um, I'm. And we did make a recommendation, yeah, pricing for that, and also a long-term upkeep of that for a while, so it isn't just installed, forget it, you're gonna go back, you're gonna make sure that it's not getting built in with. That degree of some.
Right.
Yeah, I got to.
You go to work there a couple times a year, because there is a dry hydrant, it's, uh, probably in the Rollins Room by the, um, that pond right near, like, White House used to live there, that pond, you probably remember that. We have, no, they haven't been anywhere for years, I don't even know if it worked, but we probably could do that one time. That pond is very subjective to the amount of water level it's used because of the way that, you know, climate has been, so. But when we, when we talk about this stuff, in the dry hydrants, it only, it leads into things also like our ISO rating as a community, because that would help improve that, because we have two dedicated ready-to-go sources. That we can get water out a hundred percent of the time, so it would help with that, which would also need people's, uh, helping in the homeowners insurance, because the town is better prepared to fight an major incident like that, so. There's other positives that come down the road with this stuff, so, I, I'm just gonna kind of push that one along a little bit more and try to get us those. We, we've gone to five or six fires in the last couple months, and most every single one of us go into a community that does not have a hydrant system. So, we, as Rollins Fire, have become very used at running shuttles and water supply to the point where when we show up, it's him, or it's me. Go take care of water supply. And we understand how the system works, so we've become very, very efficient. So, uh, it's kind of efficient to us to try to just keep those kind of things going, so.
So, I think your timing is good, in that, I know we just ordered on the budget last week, but we're, we're gonna start talking about the budget again, um.
Yeah, that's, it's gonna come along.
Oh, yeah, now that we're here and passed everything, then I understand.
Yeah, um, so I, I think definitely should keep that in mind for.
We'll get some, we'll, we'll, we'll work with George, and we'll work too, and see if we can kneel down what the cost may be, and we can start looking at what we can do for them.
Right, would that be something that could have the publicity? I don't know if this really would.
It, it depends on the cost, and I think one of the first steps might be to contact an engineering firm, um, who would handle the permitting for us, like, uh, what they would charge.
Right.
If one of the engineering companies is willing to, that's done this before for another community, then they might be able to tell us pretty readily what their fees and permitting fees and construction.
Well, another resource for that too, is there was a dry hydrant that sat down behind the lower mill, between the lower mill and the sewer pipe, it was on Brian Tolliver's property behind the lower mill. And he was willing to make sure that worked, and try to keep it up. Problem is, it's one of the worst locations I would ever try to use, if we need to use it for instance. So, that's why I'm suggesting we go to the two opposite ends, pretty much on our to-do, we can each have, you know, issues. If we're fielding boat ramp, remove water to the building, that's quite a.
Yeah.
Quite a joint, we can do it, we can get it there. It'll take a lot of work, but we can get it done, but that's, that's, we have to, uh, to deal with, we can run a plan over it on a head plane. Because the water shoots.
Okay, anything else for us tonight? Any other good news?
I haven't given you good news, this part, can I give you this pile, Caroline, this is stuff that will go to shock. Thank you. I've heard good news, you. I'm positive. I haven't broke anything, that's not, that's not a thing. Uh, I guess the other thing is, have you had any conversations with anybody concerning, uh, an issue on Oak Street? Are you aware of any kind of issue on Oak Street similar to what we've dealt with on South Street?
No, but if, um, please just, Clark, you know, maybe we can have a sidebar, either after the meeting or, or tomorrow, and, and talk about.
That's fine, I know, I want you to be in the loop. Tom and I had discussions today, um, he's had discussions with, um, some of the parties involved, and then went to our dispatch center and came back around to me and whatnot, so.
If you wanted to use vague terms, you couldn't let the public know without divulging the identity and any more specific location information you can tell the public what's.
Yeah, I'm the doctor, I'm the doctor.
You're finding it.
You guys understood what we did in South Street?
Yeah. So, I wonder how much to say, how much not to say.
Okay, okay.
So, I think we could just say that it was a, it was a hoarding and pump issue.
Kind of going the same way. Has it stands now, and Tom can say it's kind of become a landlord-tenant thing?
Yes. Yes, it appears.
To keep the town out of it, so we're trying to.
It appears from the conversation, tenant is the hoarder, and the landlord is looking to the town for assistance to evict him. And I explained to her what the eviction process was, especially since he's a tenant at will, and she was a little disappointed, but, but she does have an avenue. And it really wasn't anything that the town could do anyway, if we had taken any action against a hoarder or against any health issues, it would be against the building owner who was complaining.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
So, in case that comes around, just want to make that all be aware of it, it's been in some loops already, like I said, through our dispatch, they contacted me about it, and Tom and I get on the same page, couldn't get one hundred.
Cool.
Hopefully, we pass that one on and back to her. Okay?
All right.
Anything else for me, Sean?
Well, it's nice to see your faces.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
No mask on, and you know, you can see, see the spy out, we're not just looking at a set of eyeballs.
We, um, we, we got rid of the masks first thing.
Very good.
So.
We had a, so we have update of COVID, and we, we get the ship yet. And I don't think this is something I, I think this is something, there was, I think for the first time, and we had six thousand people, there was zero cases. Out of six thousand people, so that's pretty hampered.
That's very good. The only thing people do, do what they're supposed to do, and keep it that way. Very good.
All right, have a good day. Thank you. Um, next up is done illustration, and we have select board, um, committee appointments, and I'm not sure we need to decide all of this tonight. Um, there are a couple that we probably should decide, and then we have meetings coming up shortly, did you guys make the, the second page?
Yeah.
Um, so, for ex officio positions, um, there is the Budget Committee, Planning Board, Stormwater, Rec, Land Pre-CP. Joint Gloss, Highway Safety, and Department Representatives, which we currently don't really do, but we can get to that in a sec. Um, Budget has a meeting scheduled for next week of the week.
The thirtieth, I think.
Okay, so.
Six.
So, just for your edification, Kim, um, our representative to the planning board has been Caroline, um, because she has, uh, an interest and, uh, an expertise in that area. If you're, uh, and so all of these are up your grabs, um, whatever floats your boat. Um, I would like to do Budget, and I can't believe I'm saying this out loud.
You have it.
I don't, I don't know, Paul, if you had a, a strong, strong feeling?
No, I mean, we, the only thing I'll say, and I, I both came out of the saddle on Budget, um, but if you wanna take a stab at it, get familiar with it too, because you've been sitting on.
No, I mean, we, the only thing I'll say, and I, I both came out of the saddle on Budget, um, but if you want to take a stab at it, get familiar with it too, because you've been sitting on the meetings, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But I don't know if you'd want to follow in the Budget and CIP.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, CIP has a, has a soft spark in my heart.
I can stay with Rec, and I also could take on something else.
I'll take Highway Safety.
Okay.
Okay, can I still ask? I'm sorry. Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm getting all this. Kim, you said Highway Safety?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and Paul, Rec, okay, thank you.
I'm Budget and CIP. Caroline also does stormwater for us, um, which is super helpful.
But I would really appreciate if a board member wanted to also do that. Um, we are down on membership and up on, um, responsibilities for reservations, so.
I'll do stormwater and Rec.
Oh, fantastic, thank you, thank you.
That'll be fine for right now.
Land Prey hardly ever meets, I, I can do Land Prey.
Okay.
I mean, they meet like two times a year or something.
Basically.
Yeah.
What is department representatives?
So in the past, and I don't know when it was, not since I've been on the board, each select board member would sort of take a department, um, so like Police, Fire, Highway, or the major departments, I know there are others. And be that, a liaison to that department. Um, I, I like that idea, um, not that you could, like, promise them anything, but you could be, like, more embedded and know that George was going to bring three POs.
No, I don't mind, I mean, I don't want to take myself gravely too busy, but I don't mind being a representative for the Highway, get a little more involved with both Highway and Transfair.
Okay. Did you have, uh, particular interests?
I'll do, I'll do Highway.
I'll do Police.
Okay. Yeah, that goes. Um, and I'll, I can, I can step in on fire. I do, still waiting for my ride on the fire truck, and I know that I could probably swing by after this meeting and get one, but. So that leaves Joint Loss, and I don't, I've never sat on that committee.
So Joint Loss doesn't require an ex officio?
Okay.
Um, more recently, somebody has wanted to serve, so don't feel like you have to take it. It's a committee that we are required to have by law, four supervisors and four employees, um, that are subject to change every year. And we meet and talk about, um, OSHA requirements, safety concerns, you know, trip hazards, the wooden ladder that's rickety and needs to get replaced, and, and whatever the case might, code violations. We make lists of, of things. When there's a report of injury, um, it is required to be reported, to, reported to the Joint Loss Committee. They discuss why it happened and whether or not it was preventable and, and what could be put in place to prevent it from happening again.
Any, any interests from, from anyone?
It depends. So to, the Planning Board commitment, what is the commitment on the Planning Board?
It's one meeting a month, the first Tuesday of every month, um, but ahead of time to review plans, um, understand the application, what they're presenting. And meet with Tom Clark prior to the meetings and make sure you understand what's going on, what the potential concerns are. And to bring insight to protect the town interest, because people, developers particularly, have attorneys and other people representing them that will present their interest. So, um, it, it does require a little bit more, um, time, not necessarily in meeting time, but getting up to speed about, um, the, the regulations so that you can be sure developers aren't trying to take advantage of the town.
Okay, okay.
Well, are you interested?
I'm thinking, buddy.
And like I said, I don't, we don't need to, like, submit these to.
Not tonight, no, I agree.
But if you, if you, yeah, if you want to think about it.
And, and some of them probably ought to have an alternate, like, Budget, um, in case that one person can't make that meeting.
You know, I can, and we can test, discuss this at further meetings, but I could always be an alternate in Budget, since I said on it.
Okay. Yep. Perfect.
Can, um, can we make a decision between now and the next meeting?
Absolutely.
There's a next meeting before planning, so you can think about it.
Okay, great.
So I liked Planning. Um, it can be very frustrating, but, um, like, you really get to know, you really get to an education in the process, and, yes, of course. But it's another, it's another meeting we need to shuffle in here for.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to hold on Planning. Um, would you still attend those meetings, Caroline, even if you weren't the ex officio?
Um, I wouldn't have any speaking authority.
Right, okay.
But I probably would just to know what's going on.
Right.
So you had been the ex officio?
Yes.
And you don't want to do that anymore?
Oh, I'd love to do it, but I want to, you know, but, but, but you get that speed spot if you want, so, you know.
Well, I know that there's a backup plan if I, if I say I can't do it.
Sure.
Okay, great, perfect, thank you.
Okay. So we can, we're going to defer Planning, and I think that's the only one we didn't find a home for.
So it looks like nobody for Joint Loss, which is perfectly fine, because it's not required.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they usually meet during the day to agree.
Um, Joint Loss is typically during, like, it's nine AM, and it's only quarterly.
Oh, okay.
For like a half an hour, forty-five minutes, so it's not a big commitment, but it is during the day, because it's all the employees, not all the property owners.
Okay, um, we can wait for Paul, here he comes. Um, the other things that we probably should appoint tonight are this next group, um, Emergency Management Director, Tax Collector, Road Agent, and Health Officer. And we have, we have the indicated candidates, um, listed here, um, sorry. I'd like to defer the, sort of the rest of the membership, because I know we're still actively, um, seeking out, um, volunteers for those, so. What's, what's the board's pleasure on, on these, these four appointed positions?
I make a motion that we accept the appointed positions.
Okay.
I can go through them one at a time.
Yeah, if you can just say their name, just so they.
So I'll make a motion that we accept Mark Rutherford as the Emergency Management Director.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion that we accept Andrea Cass as the Tax Collector.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we accept George Dormet as the Road Agent.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I make a motion that we accept Tom Clark as a Health Officer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Yeah, that was great.
So I'm going to shuffle the agenda just a bit. Strategic planning sessions, because I think that might end up being a lengthy conversation, I'm going to just pull off on, um, to, to see where we end up one time. For Bicentennial Park, a few weeks ago, a month ago, we got an email from a gentleman, um, that has offered to have, I'll say his group, um, sort of take over the park and maybe spruce it up and add some things. Um, it's an organized group that is, uh, it's not a 500C3 charity, it's registered as a political organization. I, I looked at their website, they have.
It's probably one C seven or something?
Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't quite figure, I didn't really get much information that said something.
They're libertarians, um, from what I can gather, um, from the website. Um, my only hesitation here is that I don't have an, a, opposition to outside groups, you know, adopting a park, but I, I wouldn't want that to become, I wouldn't want that to deter other people from using it. And I don't know, you, you guys feeling, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I don't have a problem, I mean, outside, anything coming in, working, making the park nice, I just. I'm a little hesitant, because I'm not a hundred percent sure the group's about, and if it's.
Maybe, um, Caroline, if, we could suggest that, um, the, the gentleman come in and talk to the board?
That's a good idea.
Something I can ask, because, yeah, I, I don't, I didn't have a great understanding of it from, based on the website. And that would give you some time to.
Cause that's on.
To check it out.
Um, I, I did read the email, and I think it would be nice to have a little bit of question and answer with him.
Okay.
If I had an answer, great idea.
Okay, so we'll invite him.
The one thing I don't want to do on the flip side is discourage people from making the town nicer.
Absolutely.
So.
You know, and it's, it's almost a little embarrassing that we've got this outside group saying, hey, your park really needs.
True, true.
Help, um, but it is what it is, we don't, we don't have.
You know what, though, you know, like, just today, I was coming through the Legion, just looking at how nice it looks, and the flowers and stuff like that. And Bicentennial Park is still nice, I'm a little bit of a landscape, although it'd be beautiful. Um, and Rollins has some nice areas that. You know, that's something else.
I don't think people are going there for the gazebo, right? I think they're going there for the boat launch.
Right, that's something else, and I'm just, I'm off coffee a little bit, but, you know, I was all, I don't want to say I was okay, but I wasn't. I wasn't overly concerned about the people that came and did the little boat races when they came once, like, summer. But I've already noticed in there at least two or three times this, already this year. And I'm just bringing up now as a discussion, but at some point, we're going to have to bring it up with the board if. I feel like we're being abused if they're using it two weekends out of every month. And when I went by this past Saturday, it was a beautiful day, I was going to dump, well, like, it was last Saturday, excuse me. It's a beautiful day, I was going to dump, and they had their course set up, right with the launches, and it says launches open, but it, it's like they take, it is like they take the air over. And someone coming on the boat is like, you know, they got to wait for a race to get down or something, so I'm just bringing up right now a discussion. And it really has to be discussed, I guess, between the board and Legion, because we have no say anyway, if the Legion says, hey, they can come every week.
But I think there's another lever, um, in, so we have a noise ordinance.
Yep.
That is, uh, from, according to, to Chief, Chief Ducharme, it was not well spelled out by how, it's like.
Couldn't enforce it, yeah.
Couldn't really enforce it, and I think we could look to strengthening that, because I, I watched the video, I didn't actually see them doing it, and it, it was ridiculous. I think it's, it's not a good use of public space for people that aren't from here.
Right, and, and I, and I know some residents have been really upset about it, and I don't mean to disregard their, their concerns. I was sort of willing to look it out the way when it was once a year. All right, we can put up with, but now, if it becomes a habit, which I think it may, it's something we gotta address.
I think that needs to go on the else's list that keeps me by night.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, so anyway, that's that.
No, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that, that has been on my mind as well. Okay, so we're good with Bicentennial Park. Town owned equipment request, um, we have a request from an employee to buy some surplus, um, bicycles that are laying around. And I'm not going to say the price in case we decide to put these out to, for, for bids. Um, what are, what are you, what is the feeling of the board?
Uh, so my question is, well, should we make a motion to bring this forward or, or just discuss?
No, I think we can just discuss it.
Um, so what is our normal practice for surplus, um, anything, well?
Well, since I've been on the board, we've only done, like, cars, um, and we put those out for a sealed bid, um, and you have to advertise it?
You don't have to advertise it, um, it, because I was.
I guess we're advertising it to get more bids.
Sure, right. But we've never done, for as long as I've been here, we've not done any smaller pieces of equipment like that.
Is there, like, a certain dollar amount that warrants it or not?
No, there's no policy on it.
Okay.
So I look at it, and this is just looking at it, I guess, as a citizen right now. Now, as a board, no, we have some stuff upstairs, probably never be used. Town can recoup some money for us, I'm okay with that. I guess the only thing I'll go with this is. I'm trying to get words, but normally, normally, all our town residents wouldn't know there was bikes upstairs. And nothing against the person putting a bid, but, you know, someone may say, well.
I didn't have a chance.
I know, I know there was two bikes upstairs, and why did someone just get the bid on? That's the only concern I have. I don't have a problem getting rid of the equipment that's never probably going to be used in the town, we're going to some money. I just don't know how we do it fairly.
Okay, so we can do it like we would a vehicle and put it out to bid, put it on the town email, try to spread it as far and wide as we can and let people know how many bicycles we have, and get some details about how big they are and what they look like and how old they are, as much as we know.
State it as repair.
And, and put it out there, and, and you can even put a minimum bid on it of whatever you want, if you want.
So if there was an individual in town who was interested in bikes, um, we can't just say, okay, go ahead, but what we can do is put them out for bid for what the price was that individual was looking for them for. And if no one is interested, that individual gets the bikes. Is that fair to say?
You could do that. There, there is no policy.
So then we're not breaking, we're not breaking any rules and we're doing it right.
I, I feel like we should maybe think about a policy and a dollar amount.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And honestly, in the absence of a policy, I'm not adverse to, like, making, accepting this, um, but, you know, the caveat is, is we really should have a policy in place going forward.
Right.
But that's just my opinion.
Uh, you know what, I'm probably, I think.
Cause it's a lot more to process.
Honestly, I think we're not putting the bid, because no one's going to buy immediately, so.
Right.
I think this time around, we should, I agree with what you're saying, we should just allow the individual to put the bid, buy the bikes, but then set a policy going forward, that any type of equipment.
Yep, and I think.
Re-wack or whatever should go to the.
You know, we take this opportunity to look, look around and see what else we can.
True.
Get rid of.
That's true.
I think you have to consider, um, how, like, what the cost becomes if you go through the bid process and putting it on the website and all the time. So I think a dollar amount and a policy, you know, maybe it's a hundred or two hundred dollars or something.
Yeah.
And then, because maybe then it's worth Caroline's time managing the whole process.
Yeah, that sounds good.
But is it worth it managing the process for a small amount of?
So by consensus, I think we're in agreement that we, we're going to let these two bikes go, and Tom, congratulations.
I didn't say any names. See how well it's written on the same name?
Thank you, I, I really appreciate it.
No problem.
Well, you know, it's, um.
So can we, could we, sorry to add to your list, but maybe add, um, just a, a very simple policy with a dollar amount, um, about surplus? And at what point we go to bid?
All right, I'm a little, little wise guy here, but I thought the new chief, when we were talking to him, specifically mentioned those bikes, getting them out of the basement, use them for, uh, meet and greet in the community. I guess he changes his mind.
Well, well, so, so there's a different thing, which is that, and this is a separate issue that he hasn't brought to your attention, but under the stairs out back, that's in addition to the town, to, to the, to the town hall, um, the stairwell out back. So there is a room underneath, at the hole underneath of the stairwell is a storage room, and it's filled with bicycles that were left or stolen or abandoned or, or what have you. So they're working on doing whatever legal process they have to do to ultimately dispose of them, so.
So are they all junk bikes, pretty much?
Um, they're mostly kid bikes. I don't, I, they're fairly old bikes, so they're going to need some attention, um, but I, I don't know that they're junk, though.
Cause we do have a gentleman down, Dave.
Takes bikes.
Dave Jostel.
Jay Jostel, he's given like.
And he recovers them, yeah.
He gave something like forty or fifty bikes to the police, police department for kids in the last year. Just something to think about, if they're like completely junk, it's not worth it, but before they get thrown away, I should.
He would fix.
Dave would, they would use parts and stuff, so it's just something to think about.
So we're going to leave that to the chief to figure out what legal process.
Yep, sorry, I got to.
Could, could we have a motion around the bicycles, though?
Yes. I'll move forward, was it a hundred dollars for two bikes, I correct?
Yes.
I'll move forward for, uh, the sale of two bikes for fifty dollars each for a total of a hundred dollars of surplus equipment.
Second?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
Except for we're going to set a policy like you said, yeah.
Just that we create a very simple policy for a dollar amount and.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ARPA, did you have anything else, Tom?
I didn't.
Okay.
Can I let you have a question, Jimmy?
Nope. Excellent, so.
Thank you very much.
Happy to.
Bye, girl.
Thank you, everybody.
The ARPA funds, which are, is the latest round of COVID relief money, um, and I believe the town is getting two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yep.
Yeah.
What did I say?
I think you just said dollars, no, but I may have misheard you.
It's the.
Oh, all right, okay.
Instead of, right.
All right, I'm sorry.
So there are strings that come with that money and so can you just, I'm sorry Caroline, to put you on the spot, but can you go through the sort of list of things that we can, can't spend this money on?
Sure.
If you.
Certainly. Um, so it cannot just be taken without a purpose. You can't take it and put it into reserves. You can take it and help, um, people who have been economically disadvantaged by the pandemic. Which by the way, you would probably want a policy because who's to determine what that means? Um, you can use it to, um, expand or increase access to water, sewer or broadband infrastructure.
Does that include the, the stuff we just approved, like the phone lines and?
Not, not the phone system, not the phone system, no. Um.
Do you have a list available that you?
Yeah, I think it just.
You've gotten emails. So I, I sent a couple more today. So you have links and yes.
I just, I just wanted to get a flavor of.
Good.
So you can help, um, you, you can use it for anything that helps us operate better for, um, during these circumstances. You can use it to fund a vaccine site or other things that help us directly combat the pandemic. And you can use it to offset lost revenue, but you have to calculate what that is. So, which is not very significant. Um, so you can plan on probably at least over two, you know, something over 200 that would be left after that. Um, half of those funds are available soon. You, the first step is, I sent to you today is a contract essentially that you have to sign with the state that says, you know, the state being the intermediary between the local communities and the, and the feds, um, around the strings, that you're accepting the strings that come with the money in exchange for accepting the money. For example, we have to have a conflict of interest policy, which we do only because of the, um, the Culver USDA loan that we got, um, about four years ago. So, so we have that, but, um, we will all have to disclose whether we have a conflict of interest with any way that this money is getting spent. So for example, if you're gonna expand broadband and your brother works for Comcast, then you would have to disclose that. So half the funds soon, um, in, submitting for reimbursement. We don't just get the money. We have to claim dollars for purposes and get reimbursed. And then the other half of the money would come, um, not sooner than a year from now, but we can start planning.
Mm-hmm. So I just, I just wanna float this idea just for discussion really. So we have a red listed bridge on Old Mill Lane that we've gotten information from George that it can be replaced for $200,000 or something like that, right? It was a, not the million two that, um, for a real bridge. But like if we did that, is, is that something we could knock off?
You can do some infrastructure things, but I don't know that a bridge would cover it. And I'm somehow, um, a little bit cautious about the idea of the red listed bridges because something came out about that recently. But I like this brainstorming idea because if you give me ideas of projects you think might be worthwhile, then I can make sure, I can vet them.
So, so this isn't a fair question to you, Caroline, but we come up with a list and we use, say, $8,000 of the money allocated to the town. The rest of the money goes back, it's not a fair question, but the rest of the money would go back to the state or the federal government?
Rest of the money goes back to the state and would be reallocated to the other, um. The, the other, any use, the non entitlement, um, units, the other, um, there, there are five or six cities that are big enough to get, um, funding directly from the, the feds. Everybody else is getting it from the state. So for all the other communities that are getting funds from the state rather than the feds, um, the money would be reallocated. Which means that there is the potential for more than the $256,000 if other communities don't need to use all of it.
So I don't think we're gonna come up with a list tonight. I, I, I just want, you know, we gotta start this discussion and money's gonna be available soon. I believe one of the first steps is also a public hearing.
You, you have to have a public hearing, yes. But not until you know what you're doing with the money. A public hearing would be to accept the funds. So, you know, to accept the funds generally, to present to the public what they could potentially be used for. But I think it would be best at the same time to say, this is what we're starting with, is this project for this money. And, and one thing that I would present to the board is something to think about is, um, funding the expansion of the sewer line to the fire station because the fire station is a really old septic system. It's on the C I P for replacement. It would then not need to be replaced if it's hooked up. That expands access to the other people on the line. So the other thing to mention about this is that the Water Sewer District is a government entity. The funds that we receive, um, are as much as they are to account for the district also. So that doesn't obligate the town to share those funds. But, um, since the funds can cover lost revenue, it, you could certainly ask the Water Sewer District if certain people, if, if some of their customers haven't paid their bills for COVID reasons. If they can document that, what is the value of that? You could potentially reimburse them for that. Or you could give them money for water and sewer expansion process projects. But the fire station at least benefits the whole town because it's a town facility.
Okay. So yeah, we have some thinking to do and there, there is more information in email about what we can and can't spend this money on. So.
I'd like to take the time to.
Yeah, I, I think that that's.
Yeah, the email, don't take this long. Sometimes emails come on in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
No, but I try to get, I like go quick read what the email is, but you really don't get down and just get to the meat of it. So I can't, I know it came, but I can't really discuss it until I read it this week.
No, that's, that's fair. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna circle back on that.
There's some good thoughts there. I know there is.
Okay.
Okay.
Town Hall hours, there was a, um, an email from the town clerk with a proposal, um, to essentially reopen full time.
Full time to his schedule.
To his schedule.
Which would mean offering, um, hours on Tuesday from one to six, just as he currently is open Thursday. So, um, he would be working, he would be open, he's already working these hours. But he would be open, um, 20 hours a week, but that, there would still not be Wednesday hours. So that would be Monday and Friday from eight to one and Tuesday and Thursday from one to six. So it's just the, he's requesting that we open, that you, you allow him to be open on Tuesdays for those hours.
I know we don't have a, um, a sale, or say what hours he can work, but I'd just like to suggest that maybe instead of six, he goes, instead of one to six, he goes two to seven because I'm just saying a lot of people gotta work at five. It's pretty tough to get a town hall for six. But seven o'clock, a lot of people can make it. And I know it's his schedule, but I'm just saying, I'm looking at the town residents and I think seven is a lot easier than six, but.
I certainly agree.
I, I did chat with him about that. Um, I think when we were the police chief and I was asking him and he said that he loses phone support with the state after six.
Okay.
So if he gets into a situation where, but you, I, I agree with you, Paul, that, that seven's a better number. And then you have to tell them, I can't help you and not to get back to you.
But I know we don't have the authority to enforce those. We just say, it's maybe a good idea and something.
Is it town hall? Have we opened a town hall?
No, I don't think we have.
So that should be for discussion tonight probably too.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so is there, there are two things. So town hall in general, like what hours? So, you know, is it, is it these four days?
Well, so those are the town clerk hours. Um, so, so while the board really opened it up for the purposes of the front office, everybody, well, everybody who typically works during those hours is open and available as well. So, so while that wasn't really the board's intention, it's worked out that way because people are here. So, um, I, I had the tax collector email you her hours today because they're different, just so that you would know that. She only works 16 hours a week anyway, so there are four hours. She typically, she doesn't work on Fridays. Now she's also not working on Wednesdays. So, um, there, there's plenty of overlap when she's here and, and open. But just so you would all be aware, um, so it's all functional and fine. And I think everybody's fine with being open, um, the other offices. That, that hasn't been a problem.
I, I haven't heard of any complaints about, and I was just suggesting it. I really haven't heard complaints from town residents about six o'clock or seven o'clock hours. So it's just my thought. You know, we had a bunch of complaints about people being different. I'm just throwing it out there because I know in the past when I worked at five o'clock, it's like, I'm not gonna give a town hall at six.
Yeah.
We could try it and, you know, always make an adjustment later if it, you know, people are complaining.
Yeah.
But you can give them the option.
Yeah.
But, but he, he sets his hours.
Yeah. And we'll find out if, I know. I mean, he's fired for either way, but okay.
Okay. So we're, we're good with reopening on Tuesday?
Yep.
Is really the only change that, okay. I think we're good. And by consensus, we're, we're agreeing to.
Just to be clear, so the, the town clerk will now be open to the public Tuesday and Thursday from one to six and remain Friday from eight to one.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Okay, awesome. The next section is policy and, um, these have been on the agenda for a while. And so again, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna decide these things tonight, but, um, for vacation leave, Kim, I don't remember if you were on any of the, uh, okay, mail exchange. The, the first year of someone's employment in town, you get a week off, you know, a holiday. I think something a little nutty. I think that needs to be revised. Um, I, I don't know, as though we have a, um, suggestion yet. If we can look at another town like ours.
Did you say you don't, I, I missed, I made that idea, but I don't understand. So a new employee in the first year doesn't get paid holidays?
For, for six months.
For six months.
So for the first year of employment, you get one week of vacation, but for the first six months, you don't get paid holidays.
Hmm, okay.
I think they should get holidays.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should change that. As soon as someone starts getting the holidays and then one week, we can talk about it. I mean, nowadays, I don't know. We can talk about two weeks.
I, I think, you know, um, in the non-public sector, um, that typically becomes a negotiation point. Depending on the position and expertise, so.
And we have had employees that have negotiated that. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that everyone would, um, know to ask for that. But I don't know if that's our responsibility.
True, true. Yeah, I guess we can leave that one for now. I think the holiday thing though, we should address.
Yeah.
Maybe tonight or the next meeting.
So I'm going to, um, make a suggestion and ask a favor from Caroline that if you could draft like.
The red line version?
Yeah, a new, a new version of, so this is in the personnel policy, um, for us to review and consider it our next decision. Thank you. Dental insurance has, um, come up a few times. We, we tried to get enough people to, um, take it for our last, last budget cycle and we figured fifty, seventy-five percent of full-time employees. But that was a fifty-fifty split. Um. I, I don't know if we should necessarily take action on this without, you know, we just passed a budget last week that didn't really account for this. Um.
Good point.
I think it's something that I hate to say, but something we can bring up following year.
Yeah.
But this year.
Um, is there a problem with recruiting? I think I saw that there was a issue with recruiting because of it.
So there was a conditional offer that was presented to someone and, um, he didn't present it as the sole reason or even necessarily a primary reason why he chose not to accept it, but, but it was listed as a reason why he didn't accept employment.
And he has not accepted?
No.
Okay. So it doesn't need to be on the table right now then?
Correct. Okay, okay, great.
All right. Um, but you know, like just out of, like if, if I applied for a job and I didn't have dental, like I could probably go and buy dental insurance on my own. Um, that's not, that's not an option for, you know, municipal employees necessarily. Um, I just think it's the right thing to do. Like you should have, you know, coverage for your whole body. My opinion, um, it's, it comes with a price tag, of course, everything does.
So are you proposing that we consider it for the next budget season?
Yeah, that's, that's what I think.
That makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
Tax collector, I think we already addressed.
Yeah, we did, we had the first one.
COVID policy, was there an additional action?
Um, we have policies that are now not congruent with CDC guidelines. So you lift the mask mandate, um, but there are other points of that policy that are, I guess I'm suggesting, for example, also the travel policy that employees can't travel out of New England and all those things. So, um, I'm just suggesting if you wanted to rescind those policies and just, um, have employees refer to CDC guidelines.
Yeah.
Or would you like to look at those policies and revise them to keep parts of them? And otherwise say, you know, this section refers to CDC and this is gonna stay in place or if vaccinated, this will not do that.
Personally, I, maybe I'm over optimistic, but I think personally, we may have not maybe seen end of COVID forever, but something that is not gonna be out there for a while, may not ever. I think we should. We should have, refer to any policies that affect COVID to be CDC guidelines. That's what I think.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to the?
I'll make the motion for, uh, what policy, CDC guidelines for the town?
Second.
Sure.
All right. Any further discussion?
Not for me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. Okay. Um, town hall portico. So we have a purchase order and, uh, the portico has been on the, the list for a while for repair. And we have a hard time finding anyone that even look at it. Um, and now we have someone, um, that for $8,000 will repair, including the brickwork, right?
If necessary.
Let me just read this. Repair and restore the entryway in town hall, repair the main support columns, fabricate new support pedestals, scrape, which is misspelled, um, and paint entire entryway, repair any wood damage, three counts of exterior enamel paint. Inspect and rework brick foundations supports if necessary. And that was the $8,000 written? Yep, that's the $8,000. For an extra four, they'll bring all the wood, like strip it down completely and repaint.
Which is expensive because it's lead.
Mitigation.
Is this something that, um, the enforcement officer has looked at and recommended?
I don't know if it was him particularly. Um, it was, I think, fire that did. I, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't even remember the.
So I was looking at it, the other day, I didn't look at it, I was looking at it the other day and I noticed that, you know, two of the front, two front columns are looking pretty rotten and crappy.
That's the concern.
I mean, we could probably get three, three years out of it, but eventually it's gonna be more nasty. I still have a tough time with the $8,000, but I think I'm okay. I think I'm okay. You guys discuss it a little more if you want, but I think I'm okay with accepting the $8,000 and just fix it. But not go with $12,000, scrape it down the bare wood and. Like take a look at it. I mean, we don't, if you wanna take a look at it in the daylight and see what you think, we don't have to make fun of it.
Would you mind if I, you know, just like postpone it till the next?
Yeah, I don't mind.
I just wanna take a look.
And honestly, you gotta, you need to see it in the light.
Yes, in the light because what, what you, um, if you look at the bottom of the columns, because the bottom of, the, the columns are.
Stick your finger through.
Yes.
Um, it would be nice to have our enforcement officer take a look at too, just kind of get, um, his professional opinion.
I'll have you, I'll have him email you.
Go ahead and add it. It's called. What am I sure of?
Two o'clock, that's what we can.
They are going to, they also do the masonry work for this?
As, as appropriate, like, like whatever, yeah, that's the last part they mentioned, so whatever's needed. But not, not for aesthetics, but really for structure.
Okay.
Yeah, aesthetically, the brick is not pretty. It's all cracked and has been reappointed, looks like many times. Okay, so we're going to address that at our next meeting as well. There's one other P O in this folder. And I'll move purchase order twenty twelve to LaBelle Computer Services for a block of ten hours of IT support for seven hundred and sixty dollars. One second. Okay. So this is a normal. We, we have a budget line item for, for LaBelle Computer. Any, every time he uses up ten hours, he comes back and asks for another ten hours, so.
And, and we get a discount by pre-purchasing ten hour blocks rather than getting billed for use. So, so it's, it's like he's on retainer and then he uses those hours.
Twenty percent discount.
And then when he's almost done, he's got three hours left on that block, then we purchase another block.
How long have we had LaBelle?
For as long as I, like this is seven and a half years I've been here. But, but he's, you know, yeah, quite a while. His, his responsibilities have increased as our technology has increased. But to where I think you're going with this, we've not put it out to bid, we've not looked at other companies.
Excellent. Okay.
Yeah. And I, 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 I had the same thought at one point, like, you know. Could be good this cheaper, you know, somewhere else.
Not, not today.
Yeah, no, and, and, yeah. Maybe a little more sometimes efficient.
Yeah, okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor? Twenty, I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, yeah, yes.
For seven sixty.
I, I will ask.
Nope, I just, I just need a vote.
All right, yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Sorry.
No, no worries, we took that a little over. Okay. Board and member updates.
I look for us, I don't really have a whole lot to update about, but. Rec committee's meeting in June, can't tell you the date, it's up ahead. I think this meeting will be probably the meeting that will at least generate some action and stuff. Because, you know, for the last year we didn't meet, but to really, they'll do it.
Yep.
And we know, we already know, and someone, someone approached me last week about Camp Raleigh. I said, no, there's, there's no chance of Camp Raleigh coming back this summer, I know. It's COVID, it's pretty much gone away, but it's not possible this summer. We may get, we may get a few more questions about that, I don't know.
Well, hopefully we had to decide that.
I know, and I think we absolutely made a good decision. Because even if we, even if, if we made the decision to go with Camp Raleigh, which would have been the wrong decision. It would have been, in my opinion, ran forward because it wasn't planned right, and then it would have been a lot of, a lot of parents upset. So I have no qualms about that, but I think, I think the rec committee, I mean, they still need volunteers, but I think. There's a few people that really want to make a difference on that board. Mike's one of them, so hopefully we'll get some stuff moving.
Perhaps it's a discussion for budgets for next year.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and, yeah. I don't know, we'll discuss Camp Raleigh more. That's all I got now, see how the meeting goes. I think we'll be more enthusiastic about it going on in the town. You know, family might go with me, you know, family day, usually summer.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
I don't have that much either. I was at the election last Tuesday and I, I meant to send an email to Dan to thank him. I think it, it went very well for his first election.
It did.
And to Charlie, of course.
Yep.
But, yep, I don't, I don't have anything else to report.
I would just say, this is just me talking, it's the first time I've gone through the election process and. This guy's got to find a count, count the votes and go through everything.
It's battles for murder, so. Only does the page one and page two look very similar.
Yeah, it's surprising you only have four mixed up.
We only have four mixed up. Town administrator updates.
So there's a stormwater meeting tomorrow. UNH conducted a dry weather testing of the outfall across from the legion. It came back great, that's really good news. That's something we've had to start doing this year for our permit. And it was really exciting to get an email from UNH and Dover coordinating to do that for us. So there was no expense involved, there was no effort really involved on our part, on our, on our part. And now we have a report to submit with our annual report, which is due in September. So that's really exciting. What's, what's really not exciting is that tomorrow is the last meeting with Paul Kuzalt. Who's been chairing that committee for a number of years and really holding the project together and keeping the town directed. With our obligations. There, there are a lot of meetings with other communities around stormwater. And effort in making decisions around what is the public outreach going to look like around dog waste or leaf litter or septic or what have you. So he does a lot of the legwork around that. He, he works with the state to get us copies of pamphlets for free. So he's an engineer and we've been able to benefit from his expertise and his organizational skills and, and that's been great. We need to be strategizing about how to compensate for that because that's a huge loss. So I'm just putting it out there that, you know, a thank you to Paul Kuzalt for his hundreds of hours on this, on this committee.
We honestly would be very.
As well.
Yeah.
Recruitment. Replacement.
What, what time is the meeting in town? Is it live?
It's here at six thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be great if you're, that's short notice.
Do they, is it about, usually about now, I mean?
Typically, depending on what we're going through. The annual reporting is really complicated and we typically go through that page by page. It's six or eight pages long and go through, you know, what did we do this year? And do we say it this way or do we say it that way? It's a very nuanced and kind of, and technical thing. But throughout the year, not as much. It's more about just keeping us on track with our obligations for the report, the annual report and the permit. That being said, we had a member of the, a resident on, General Sullivan, reach out to the town a couple of years ago now. To get a private catch basin installed in his yard and tied into our system. And it took the stormwater committee a long time to deliberate about that and, and consider whether or not that was a good idea and talk to other communities. And what kind of conditions would we put on that if we were to allow it and all those things. The stormwater committee is reviewing, they have a policy, I will send you all the materials for tomorrow night. A, a policy for you all to consider for adoption that might allow this resident or other residents that opportunity. Because the water table is really high, General Sullivan, so particularly during those winters we've had recently. Where the ground's frozen and it's really icy and then it rains in January and the, and the water has nowhere to go. It would flood his yard and a catch basin would be really helpful to direct that somewhere besides into his garage. So we can certainly talk more about that if you have questions, but that's the purpose of that, that's coming down the plate. We, area communities are considering a software program that we might purchase as a group. Which will help us keep track of our stormwater obligations and what the nitrogen impact might be for those things. So that's kind of exciting. Don't know what the cost would be for that. It's being used in Utah and Orange County, California, it's a great result. It's also public facing, so that the public and the regulators can see all of our information through the public portion of that software. So I don't know if that's going to happen or not. That's that. Cast towing got approval last, at the last meeting with the planning board. Conditional approval for the towing business at that location on Summersworth Road with conditions. All the conditions have to be implemented within the next one hundred and twenty days. Including the vegetation plan for the front, which he will present to the town for us to decide. Tom and I will work out what we think about this vegetation plan for what's going to be an island in front of the property. Around which is otherwise pavement of the front yard area. Other conditions include a, a monitoring well to make sure that chemicals aren't seeping into the groundwater. He's got to move some vegetation and materials away from the setbacks. So he has a few things to do, but he's agreed to the hundred day deadline. The next step after that will be working with the town to renew the junkyard license. Which is a separate thing with its own conditions. The conditions of the junkyard license must be maintained at all times as a condition of the towing operation. So he will be working with Tom Clark to renew that once he's met all the obligations of the plan. So there's progress there, but there's also work to do. The town will recoup the fees of the last two or three years where we have not had a license, a valid license with him. While we waited for him to get through this process. He went through CBA and then he went through planning and it's just taken a really long time. So that's kind of a milestone. And I just wanted to remind the board that I'm off from Wednesday through Monday.
Good, enjoy.
So, thank you.
Thank you as well.
Yeah. Awesome. And I, I realized now I skipped over something, but I did want to talk about strategic planning. I think it's a, it's a great idea and I know since I've been on the board, we've, we've said like, oh, we really need strategic planning. And here we are, three years later without having done it. I think we should dedicate a, a meeting on its own to them, to that exercise. And Caroline, I liked your suggestions, I, I don't really have any other suggestions as to how to, how to, you know, brainstorm and prioritize. The stuff, so. I don't know if there's, there's a special urgency, you know, it's one of these things that it's like. Anything you don't want to do, you can put off forever.
I don't have a problem with one of our off Mondays. Just making it, you know, just the three of us and Caroline and what else can we do to do strategic, strategic planning and talk about. Goals and objectives.
Right, set it, maybe we could set a goal for, you know, a Monday next month.
Yep.
And we'll do that maybe at our next meeting. Is that good?
That's fine, yeah. I'm, I'm on, I'm on vacation next Monday, so that would be, that would be great if we could kick Kansas.
Absolutely. No, no, no.
But not, you know.
So maybe the Monday after the following, or is that until the fourth of July?
So it would be July nineteenth. Is there, is there off Monday? Because the, the fifth is a holiday, obviously. The nineteenth is our sort of next free Monday.
So we'll plan over there at six, when the server comes up.
Yep. Uh, July nineteenth. Which rattled something in my brain, the Comcast, they're coming to our, the twenty eighth.
Thank you for mentioning that. The Comcast representative, I. Sorry, I need to. It would be beneficial to have three people there, the town attorney, the resident who's very knowledgeable and did this for another community. And also the Comcast representative. The Comcast representative is not comfortable coming in person for the date I suggested.
Okay.
Only because he's not feeling well and wants to let that ride. So I'm thinking, I, if you all are on board with this. Maybe for the off Monday app, I, I don't, I don't know if you want to do it on an off Monday at this point or before another meeting. But this kind of segues into the suggestion I think Kim was going to have about, do, do we want to revise the meeting throughout time? And, and, and does that change if there's going to be a public hearing? Because sometimes the board would have a public hearing for a meeting, so.
Yeah. So just, just two, two things. So we have to have a public hearing for Comcast. We have a contract that we haven't, we're doing a yearly, real contract, kind of like written for thirty years or something crazy like that. So it's, it's, I think it was a suggestion to have a public hearing by our attorney.
Yes.
I don't think it's required, but I, I think it's a, it's a good idea, let the public know what we're, what we're thinking. We, we could potentially do it on that, on that nineteenth.
Yeah, because.
And just go right into this.
So it wouldn't be like an hours long, I say that, I can't really predict it.
I don't see, I don't see, I'm seeing a lot of public participate, because it's only TV. Only TV's not, you know, it's so many other people.
So you can get services in exchange for what the residents who subscribe to cable pay. So they, if you look on it, if you, if you have cable, you'll see the government fees. And so those government fees go directly to the town. So we get about thirty thousand dollars a year from that. There, we can negotiate terms though of this contract. For example, do we want this room wired for public access television? And then we can livestream meetings, for example. That's certainly something we can talk about. And, and by the way, I've had two residents inquire about the idea of hybrid meetings.
I was going to mention that.
So that's something that maybe we can work with the Comcast agreement and maybe we can work with the ARPA funds to maybe figure that out. If that, if the board likes that idea, but.
Are you, what did you call it? Virtual meetings. So hybrid would be, we'd be meeting here live in person, but we'd have a, a monitor here where some, somebody in the community can answer questions.
Right, like maybe, yeah, I, I don't know how, like we, we have to get some people to know about these things. You know, how would we do this? We can project, we, we have this projector system, it's, it's old, but, but it works. You could livestream, but I don't know that you need to livestream to cable for, for this to work.
Couldn't you just use Zoom in the way you do now, or we had been using Zoom?
The, the challenge with that is that we can project Zoom to be there so that we can all look at who's participating. If, if I have a laptop where you're sitting or where Miles is sitting, they're not going to hear people in the audience.
Bluetooth.
Maybe?
So I think it can be solved. But it's a great idea because I think people are more inclined to participate in these meetings.
Certainly if they can stay home and do it.
I agree, we're all, we're all, and we just want to feel, that's what I think it works.
Page that needs to go on our list for strategic planning.
Yeah, I agree.
And also the ARPA funds, maybe could be helpful with that, if there are.
Yeah.
This was the expenses.
Okay, so to get us back on track here, I think we're done with your update?
I am done with my.
All right, thanks, sorry.
Other, no, no, other business to come before the board and you have inquiry.
I'd, I'd like to propose that we move the meetings back to six thirty.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, I think six was fine because, you know, my, my, from my couch to my desk. Short, or.
Yeah, and I could.
And it was a little bit of a scramble to get here for six o'clock.
Yeah, I could eat, like, sometimes we'd have meetings and I would like, you know, you guys won't know me because I'll like turn the camera off in three minutes while I eat. Because I just got home.
We, we know. We know.
Did you?
So I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with that. So the next one?
The next one, yeah, so six thirty. What about every other week? I. I, um.
Fine with that too for now.
I'm fine with that too. I, I think, so I, I also think we should start our budget, like, the earlier the better. CIP we did in August of last year, we had a series of meetings. The problem is with that, there's a lot of holes that don't get filled in until, like, you, we don't know the, the insurance number and the ambulance number and the this and the that. But I think we should start discussing it because that's going to be here before we know it, unfortunately.
It's going to be faster.
But at, at least, at least we can start the discussion, like, whether we want to try to keep it level, we want to try to reduce it, those sorts of things. So now I'm off track. Okay, so any, anything else, any other business to come before the board?
Not for me.
Okay. Community input.
We get that twice.
We do it at the beginning and the end, yeah.
For some people, like, log, come in late.
Because we get people that stroll in whenever they.
Or they might want to comment on what was discussed during the meeting.
Carrie Boyle, I don't have to say my address right now.
No.
Okay. I guess my, my comment was, I was actually going to ask if the board would consider doing something going forward now that it's back in person, continuing something like Zoom where, where people, you know, I know that the, the participation was, was strange to say, but there were, there was more participation during the pandemic. And just also it gives people an opportunity if they can't, you know, if they're traveling or something, they can still, you know, they can still listen in and if they have questions as it comes up. I know that, that it gets videoed, but something gets lost between watching the video and then you have questions. So I, I would like to see that, so I was happy to hear that you guys were going to look into that and, and consider that.
Good, I think, I, I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, I just think we need to technically work it out.
I think the other part of that, I was reading 91A, is it gives us the ability to participate remotely as well. So you have to have a legitimate reason not to.
I didn't give you that, but. But if you're traveling, for example.
The legislature is working on the, the ability for us to meet remotely.
As, as an option, yes, and we don't want that.
Well, 91A does allow it, but like, so there has.
But only, like, like, two of us couldn't do it.
We have to have a court here.
Right?
Yes.
Right. But believe me, I would, you know, it's actually, it is nice to see people and you can see people's faces and real time reactions.
Exactly, yeah.
It'd be nice to be home, and it's my pleasure.
It's nice to have the option.
All right, so I think that's it.
I have something.
Okay.
Yes, please.
On that, those funds, if you were to do something for the wastewater going into the river next year, would that help you with the nitrogen permit? Or is that too early?
It's not that it's too, well, it's kind of too early for our nitrogen permit. For the first two years, we're in testing mode.
Yeah.
Monitoring and then we'll, and then we'll get a nitrogen limit after that. That doesn't mean that we couldn't, like, like strategize about that potentially though and, and see what they might be looking at for upgrades and see. The, the idea qualifies, and yes, you could hit two birds with one stone, but it would take some, some planning to get the funding before it expires. But you don't want to be too aggressive with your nitrogen permit because this is one of the, nitrogen and stormwater are kind of funny where you, you need to meet the requirements. But if you do eight plus every year, you don't have any room for improvement. And that's a ridiculous.
No, no, I was saying, this is the wrong way to look at it, but if we put, not purposely, but if we put more nitrogen in for the next two years, then our goal is easier than if we like started cutting it now and then they, they weigh us for three years. This is what you get, I, no, I'm not saying that's the right way, but I know.
Well, right, so, so that's something to look at in terms of when you have to plan to expend these funds. Because if you can do something that, you know, I, I don't know how much it costs to have what kind of impact with wastewater. So I don't know how far a certain amount of money can get you in terms of wastewater nitrogen remediation, but it's something to look into because if you can do something that's not everything that's technologically possible for the design of, of that facility, then that may be worthwhile. But that would take a lot of conversation with the district because their engineers and their people know what that cost and opportunity is.
With that, I, I think we're ready to adjourn by consensus?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, this is a celebration.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, shoot.
Yes.
I'm just getting up to do that.